I ask you all to stay seated for just a moment. I have invited a guest to come tonight to give the pledge of allegiance to the flag. But before I do, I want to show you this young lady in action at the Sandlot Super Bowl. Three-year-old Maya Mitchell singing the national anthem.
To the seniors. Her name is Maya Mitchell.
Woo! Oh, Maya! Yeah!
Gentlemen, please take off your hats and if you feel so, please put your hand up your hearts for the singing of our national anthem.
Oh, if you see by the thunder we cry so proud when we held at the twilight last sleep, who but strife and bright stars, friend, the peril must fight, or the ground was tough when we watched out, gallant we screaming, the rockets may flare to burst, bursting near gave proof to the night, and our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star spangled banner wave, the land of the free and the home of the brave? Yeah!
Now, a whole lot further to say, I am going to introduce the crowd to my friend, my girlfriend, Tori. Come in, Maya. Thank you so very much. Thank you so much for coming. Are you going to, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay. Like right there, you'll join us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, Maya, before you leave, Maya, I have a distinct pleasure to have the ability to award you, for patriest, for spirit, for what, for all the things that you do, I am giving you a key to the city.
Get down low, Maya.
And I thank you so much. Look, you got it. Hey, hold up your key. Hold up your key. Just a little bit, Maya. Now, Maya, in addition to that, I want you to have one of our town logos that you can put on your dressing area so that you'll thank the town of Christiansburg and the town council. And this one is for mom and dad, they're bucking to put it on their car to show that you're a special citizen. I would also like to introduce Jeff and Leslie Mitchell, their parents. Thank you, thank you very, very much. Good, Maya, you'll take that and you're ready to go. And I may invite you back again, who knows? This is a joint public hearing with the planning commission, a conditional use permit request by Peggy A. Beasley for a flea market with an exception to pave parking at 275 Starlight Drive, tax parcel five twenty-nine A dash thirteen, in the B three general business district. Is there anyone here to address this audit?
I live on that street at the end of the cul-de-sac next to it, and I don't quite understand what they're trying to do.
All right. You think she, at the old drive-in, they have a flea market on, on the weekends. And they, one of the issues that requires them to, requires them to pave the entire lot, and she's asking for a variance. It's pretty compacted gravel up there, it's been open fifty years, so I'm sure the gravel's in. That's all she's asking is to have a flea market. Do you notice any, you don't ever notice?
No.
All right. Anyone else to address this, this issue? I will close the joint public hearing. We now have a public hearing, a conditional use permit by Shaw Development LLC for residential use at two seven six five Run-up Street, tax parcel five oh one dash one dash twenty-six A, in the B three general business district. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
I just have a couple of questions.
I run the daycare. In your name?
I'm sorry, Catherine Cummings.
Thank you.
And I run the daycare that's right there next door to where that would be built.
Okay.
And just being a daycare, our only concern was if there, and I don't even know if there is, that's kind of just my main question, if there is anything that can be done to start background checks, if it becomes a rental property, so that we would kind of know, I mean, of course, people that are registered are not supposed to be moving into locations like that, but we're just kind of wondering if Shaw is responsible in any way for any kind of background checks for any rental property.
That's a good question. Do we have a rep here? Mr. Rutledge, would you be?
Is there anybody else who would be able to answer?
Where are you going?
My name is Tom Rutledge, I'm project manager with Shaw Development. Thank y'all for allowing me to be here today. We went through everything with planning commission, they come up some great ideas, and wanted to, and the adjacent property owners as well. They wanted some increased vegetation buffer along Patricia Lane. We talked about some screenings, some vital privacy fencing adjacent to the daycare center and also the Run-up Street, those have been added and are on the plan that you had to get back at those. That conceptual plan has been proffered. I cannot answer the question about the background check, because I do not know what the policy and procedures are in the rental, the property management division of our office. But I do know that the residents are screened, to what extent, as far as background and financial and everything like that, all applicants are screened. These units are set up to subdivide, that does not mean that we would not rent them until such times as we found them another. But their, their process is pretty stringent.
The, Mr. Rutledge, if I could ask you a question. The property line for Shaw Developments, actually the entire property, that, that one line that's set up that's closest to the learning ladder, any approximation to the distance between the property line for Shaw's property and the learning ladder property?
Oh.
I'm looking at it on the map, but I don't, it's gonna be, I guess I could do scale to feed, does it look like about thirty to forty feet?
I would venture to say that it is close. Right, and what that, the dark line between the two is actually the six-foot tall privacy fence.
Privacy fence, yes.
This was all one large parcel of land, we sold the learning ladder parcel off, then we retained the piece out front. And I guess for commercial, it almost seems like to be on the wrong side of the interstate bridge, and we've had it listed for years and years and years with absolutely zero activity.
The, if I may ask Ms. Cummings as well, I should know this, but I don't, how long has the learning ladder been established there?
Uh, it's gone on six years.
Oh, gone on six years? And Mr. May Longley, I would ask is that, I mean, I'm well aware of the statutes that regard, very serious about the issues brought up, so I'm very aware of the statutes that regard convicted sex offenders, child sex offenders on their state registry and the state police registry. Obviously, there's a lot of codes that say they can't move within a certain, I think it's about a hundred feet of a school, or anywhere where children are known to congregate, in fact. And so I'd like, I'm not sure of a, of a proposed residential area. I'd like to know that answer, though. Something we can look up, or if we could maybe have our attorney, I can look that up, but I, I don't want to step out of the bounds of being a council person, but we can have that examined as well. I think we all have a good history of Shaw, and certainly the quality of what they bring to the community in all regards, but that is something I think that needs to be considered as well. I appreciate you bringing that up.
If nothing else, that's the good information to have on hand, if the attorney could follow up on that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rutledge, there is a six-foot pass separating the two pieces, right?
There is.
Okay, and that wood, was it?
Uh, I think, actually, the condition said wood, but we were more near torpial.
Well, okay, so. And so you cannot really see from there to the learning center that well?
Uh, well, no, these are proposed two-story units.
Okay.
So, yes, you could see every fence from the top. The topology of the lot slopes from the Run-up Ladder to Run-up Street, so you're coming down the hill, but the two-story units, you could see every fence, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Anyone else?
Yes. We, there is the last meeting about the drainage problem we have on the street, and also about the overflow parking, because they said there wouldn't be but two parking places per house. Has anything been done about that?
Dr. Dress, Mr. Mayor, one of the planning commission's recommendations was that they were concerned, when we had the first public hearing.
Yeah.
We actually went back and was able to add, even though the two spaces per unit is always required by town code, we were actually able to pick up four more additional places, spaces, excuse me, for parking all along.
What happened to drainage problem?
The drainage area, I think staff is going to work with engineering when we do our site plan process, because I had the same concern that you did down at the bottom of Patricia Lane. So, the planning director will get the director of engineer, and they'll review that, when they were reviewing my site plan as well. So, you know, we can either work together, or if it's an off-site issue, the town will address, if it's something that's contributed to my site, it's something that I'll have to address, but it will be looked at.
Yeah, but we, like, you know, when it rains, we have all the water there, but now it's getting cold, you have the ice. We can't pull out the road.
I've got the same, same concerns.
Okay. I got it. Just a quick question. And Tom or Nicole answers. Other than residential, how so now, what could you put out there, potentially?
B three, sheets.
Gas station, garage?
Yes, sir.
Best food, restaurant? Okay.
As Mr. Powell was recording the whole planning commission meeting, he thought it was a, I don't want to speak the joke, but he was saying it's more of a fair use, but more of a transitional use right there, because even though we've got the business with the learning ladder, we've got the Huckleberry Restaurant across the street, these people live in nice townhomes along Patricia Lane, and they're single family even in behind that.
Right.
So, we're hoping that that will be a better fit for that group.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna follow up with that. The one concern that those of us who've lived there since the beginning is parking. Parking is always, you've talked about what you're going to do on your lot. We would like the town to please leave up the no parking signs on Patricia Lane. Everybody's brother wants to come there and park when they're not there. I used to work at a hospital, and I'd work midnights and come home, and people would be parked in my driveway. I'd have to call a wreck truck to come and get them, so I could get into my own house. Part of that was from across the street, when it was going really big. It's kind of slapped off now, but who knows for how long? And with the, with the children, they come over and use our little driveway to, to ride around when the, you know, when the weather is pretty, and so we would really like to, to keep the, the agreement we have with them. We like having them, and they'll be coming to visit us, and they come visit us on Halloween and other days. So, we would like to keep the no parking signs if possible.
Got that noted, Charles? Thank you.
That was my comment as well.
Anyone else to address this issue?
Can I make one comment, as a follow-up to Mr. Hall's? I want to make sure I understand the request from the town attorney, with the concern about sex registry, sex offenders and so forth. Is, is the request to consider what latitude the town has to require that for a property owner or property manager?
I don't think there's anything we can put upon Shaw to look at that, that's simply a.
I'm just asking, what, specifically, what is our town attorney going to look into?
Well, frankly, I mean, that's something we, I would, I would like to know the current state of the law in regards to proximity, proximity to children, and that we can pass that information along, but same respect, though, I don't, I know this is awful, you just asked me, but I don't see how we can hold a property developer, that's an individual liability issue, I mean, that's gonna be.
And I don't know, I know the planning commission is making an amiable recommendation of this, it was carried a lot of weight with me.
Sure.
But it's a good point, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're going to be looking at. But if we don't have that latitude to do that, then.
Well, I mean, I think the only way you would have the latitude is if they, under certain conditions, I believe, of the way the property was going to be, I mean, if it's set up for an apartment complex, where there's going to be a general manager, agile manager would be retained under employment of Shaw perhaps, and there would be a process of screening in that regard, maybe you could. But, but these are going to be units that would be sold, or, then I don't think that, again, that's putting too much, that's putting, I think, too much upon the property developer themselves. Although I can appreciate the, again, the concern, that's why I'd like to know the state of the law.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have Shaw, I hope that the laws would govern everybody on that street at the same rate.
Absolutely.
Right. No, I don't mean that against Shaw.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
If, if we have something in a CUP that can address that, that's what I'm interested in.
Did I have a comment somewhere down the line?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify exactly, because I'm still not exactly clear what I'm looking into. Is it to what condition we could put in the CUP? Is it whether we can deny the site plan based on the proximity of the children? I mean, what is?
I guess the question I would have is, is if it's even, I think legally possible for locality to have, as a, as a condition of a CUP, that a property owner screen potential applicants as a, for sex offender registry offensive, I should say. But again, it all of it would depend upon what Shaw's determination is they're going to do to that property, I've seen what they're going to be doing. Well, I mean, I ask Mr. Rutledge, are you gonna be, how is Shaw gonna be for everybody? How will they be utilizing this property, if you will, thirty seconds or less? I mean, we've got the information in front of us, but if you would detail how the property's gonna be utilized.
If one of those units, I thought units are set up to be subdivided, to lay individually to separate owners. What, what will happen is, we hope that we sell everyone, but if we, if we do get them up, and they set vacant, we do rent. Sometimes we do rent to homes, sometimes we'll do for employees or something, they'll do it out of finance, a lot of people, they've got credit issues or something like that, to help them reestablish, get back on their feet, or then just go into the river pool. But our sole goal is to convey each unit separately.
And I would.
And it will be residential?
Yes.
Correct. We're not gonna see a gas station on the corner of, a zone on the corner of.
I guess I would just ask then, if you called, number one, in, in the position that's just been stated as a conveyance of property, being, CP to be requested, do we have any power to put a condition on the conveyance of that property for the property owner to do a background check, given the, the, given the proximity to a area frequented by children in or daycare facilities? Secondly, if there's a CUP request, and the property is to be retained by the owner and rented, would we have any different powers in that regard? That might be the, that might be the crux of what we could do. And again, I want to be very clear with Mr. Rutledge, this is not in any way slapped to Shaw at all.
No, I see.
They've always been top notch, but there is a doubt, I was unaware. I mean, I see it here, and it just didn't, I'm not smart enough for that, just to click in my mind, and I appreciate you bringing that up. But I'd just like to know, it's for now and for future reference, if we do have the power to look into that, especially since we're thirty or forty feet away, and we're stone's throw. So, that would be my only question, so I didn't mean to be so complicated.
And I thought that's, I inferred that's what the, what the request was. Is there any control that we have? Reasonable control?
Reasonable, yes, sir.
Okay.
And one other question I'd have for them, is, are you or not expected to be low-income housing or subsass housing or anything like that, correct?
I believe you said, Mr. Brashford, is the, the low end would be a hundred round one hundred and seventy?
One sixty, I think, is what I heard.
One sixty was the low end. Let me, one more question, too. If, if a person is a sex offender, aren't they required, like, to state that when you are given a piece of property or something like that? Or, or could you do that, question them, when you're going to rent that to them, or sell that?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Can you do, is that?
I don't understand that.
Is that too much of a big law question?
We'll get some clarification.
Yeah, let's, let's get the clarifications on what we can actually ask, if we can actually ask anything, right? Because if we, if we're suddenly starting to put certain restrictions on one group, then we need to go back and do it for all. So, if we're opening a, and I realize that not every subdivision plans, built near a, a daycare center, however, if it is rental property, or potentially be rental property, I think we could open a can of worms if we're requiring one and not requiring everyone. So, with that, Tom, thank you.
But if there's anything we can do on our end, we would love to.
Certainly. Anyone else to address this issue? We'll move on to the second public hearing, council's intention to adopt an ordinance amending chapter forty-two zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to provisions for private recreational facilities in the I two general industrial district with a conditional use permit. Is anyone here to address that, Mike?
Any questions, anyone has, I'd be more than willing to answer those.
They were present at one of our council meetings, our last council meeting, I think, and gave a, a brief synopsis. Mike, would you mind doing that again?
Sure. My name is Mike Harris, I'm president of New River Baseball Incorporated, that's the capacity I'm here tonight. What we have is, we have a local travel baseball softball organization. We're looking at moving into this location as a new indoor facility, something we have for twelve months of the year. We currently have been using another, another building we have available for five months of the year, but this is kind of a big step for an organization that currently has about thirteen teams, and probably expanding another three or four, or something like that at some point in time. It's the old Pepsi building, I think, is what's most commonly referred to, but basically that property, mostly indoors, some, some a little bit outdoors as far as throwing balls and stuff like that, batting cages hung inside, and that sort of things.
Mr. Harris, that's the majority of Christiansburg kids, correct?
That is a lot of Christiansburg kids, yes, sir.
And that building's not being used currently, it's just like dormant?
It is currently vacant, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall, I'm, I'm correct in saying that, I'm answering that as a question. The, the amendment to the ordinance is the addition of one sentence, correct?
I have, yes, I have the ability to have a private recreational center industrial type.
Yeah, it says private building to consist of recreational facility with a conditional use permit.
Okay. Anyone else to address this? Contingent upon the above item, a conditional use permit request by Mike Harris, agent for property owner Raymond Myers, for a private recreational facility at three seventy-five Bell Road, tax parcel four nine nine dash A dash one F, in the I two general bis, general industrial district. Again, it's all with contingent upon council's actions when this comes before. Shaberry, is that gonna come to the next meeting?
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
I think we're, I would like to make a motion that we add item two and three to the present agenda and deal with that tonight. And in our discussions in the past, in hearing, there's been no objections whatsoever, frankly, we've had all of our questions answered. I'd like, we're just simply kicking it down the road to another meeting. I'd like to go ahead and get this off the current agenda.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion for items two and three.
Is that a second?
I suspect.
A motion of the second, all those in favor of voting on these items tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move those to agenda item one C, which is being replaced, is being dropped, and one D, we're not going to look at, at one C on the second. Thank you, we did that last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I will call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. I'll ask if each of my council members, our council members, have received a copy of the minutes.
I have, and I've read them, and I would move that we adopt them as presented.
Second? We have a motion on the second, any discussion? Hearing none?
It's a quick one.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed?
I'd have to abstain, Mr. Mayor, as I was not present for the last council meeting.
Very good. So, it is a five oh and one vote. Do you have that recorded, Ms. Clover?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Citizens hearings. We have two citizens hearings tonight, before we get into the actual citizens' comments. The first is the Coal Center report on the economic impact of the Christiansburg Aquatics Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Scott Greiner, I'm a faculty member at Virginia Tech and also extension specialist, and had the opportunity this semester to lead a, or mentor a team of students who's cooperating in what's called the Coal Center, which was initiated about a year ago. The Coal Center is housed in Department of Ag Economics at Virginia Tech in the College of Ag, and it's a very unique learning experience where it allows teams of five, or teams of students to come together, in a kind of an applied learning environment, to take what they've learned in the classroom and apply that to a real world setting. There were five teams, I believe, that had projects this semester, one of those teams you're gonna hear from tonight. And should share with you a little bit how this came about. One of my volunteer jobs, I should say I'm a Christiansburg resident, one of my volunteer jobs, I have two daughters, which are swimmers, so I spend a lot of time right here at the Christiansburg Aquatics Center, and I'm also president of the New River Valley Aquatics Group, who is the parent organization to the H two O Hokey Swim Team, and I think most of you recognize, this is our home pool. And being a Christiansburg resident, I see and hear a lot of discussion about this great facility, and, and among those who asked the question, what's the value of this facility to our town? So, I took that question to Dr. Kim Morgan, who's here tonight. Kim, raise your hand. Kim's the director of the Coal Center. Kind of played that to her, we thought that'd make a great student project to evaluate that. We solicited the help of Dr. Jim Pease, one of my colleagues at Virginia Tech in the Ag Econ Department. Dr. Pease is an economist, and so we've got four students, which have kind of looked at that particular question, are here tonight to share with you what they've been up to this semester. With that, I'll turn it over to them. They'll introduce themselves and share a little bit who they are.
Right. Hi, everyone. We are Team Aquatic with the Coal Center. My name is Ashley Pickett.
Nick Peavy.
I was calling, you in?
And I'm Heather Delaney. Okay, so, like Dr. Greiner said earlier, our product stemmed from, from the questions about the Aquatics Center. The Aquatics Center was built in two thousand and ten and cost about nineteen million dollars to build. So, naturally, with something this big, it's no wonder why some community members question some of the economic value of the Aquatics Center, so that's exactly what we did with our project this semester. And some of the stakeholders in our project are obviously the taxpayers of Christiansburg and Montgomery County, the employees whose jobs reside in the Christiansburg Aquatics Center, and also the swim teams who swim here every day. So, just to give you an overview of how we went about doing things, first, we went to an orientating session over the summer and developed a logic model for this whole project, and then we decided it was best to tour the Aquatics Center and actually see what we were working with, see what the facility had to offer, and be able to talk firsthand from it. And then we decided the other best thing, after developing our analysis research strategy, we decided it was best to do a survey and give it out at the meets. We actually gave out a survey at an H two O K meet and a Virginia Tech swim meet. And then we collected this information, and from there, we decided it was, we found a way to estimate our tax revenue and total patron spending from our survey, and then with Dr. Pease's help, we created this general, or this in-plan, regional input-output model.
And now, I'll give you kind of idea of how it got started. On the left was our original logic models, I don't think you can really see it, but it's pretty much just all of our ideas, just on paper. On the right was our actual, actual plan of action. We started by gathering financial data from the Aquatics Center, as well as surveys on the meets that we attended, and then we analyzed the data and plugged into our economic impact analysis, and it brought it to you all. Once we were first assigned a project, we have either never heard of the Aquatics Center or let it be here, so we thought it'd be best to, you know, so, you know, come here and take a tour of the facility, and that's where we met Allison Zukowski, and she was nice enough to show us around, as well as explain the manner, manner of structure, as well as the facilities that are offered here. After that, we met with Dr. Jim Pease, and we kind of brainstormed and figured out what kind of information that we will need to gather for our analysis. And here is an example of the survey we handed out. As you can see, we asked questions, how many people were in your group, how many nights would you be staying, how many restaurants would we be eating at, how much money you would spend approximately?
So, as Kyle said, our overall goal was to find out how much money was being spent by the swimmers coming to the Aquatics Center, as a majority of them are from out of town. And from our survey, we were able to estimate the average number of rooms.
So as Kyle said, our overall goal was to find out how much money was being spent by the swimmers coming to the Aquatics Center, as a majority of them are from out of town. And from our survey, we were able to estimate the average number of rooms people booked, the average number of people that come with each swimmer, average expenditures per person per night or day on food and lodging. And from this, we were able to estimate overall expenditure on food and lodging, which were key factors in our impact analysis.
Okay, so I'm going to walk you through how we kind of did our tax revenue estimation and just the overall expenditures coming from the Aquatics Center through meal and lodging, and I'm just going to go over how we did it for the meal. So this is actually a meet that happened in 2013, which was what our, the year that our in-plan model was based off of. So at this meet, there were 842 total swimmers. From that, I was able to break it down into 256 local and 586 non-local swimmers. So from there, we decided to multiply the number of non-local swimmers by 2.5, and this 2.5 number comes from the amount of people that were estimated to be with each, with each swimmer at the meet. And we say this is a conservative number because when we actually asked this question during our survey administration, the number was 2.8. So we underestimated a little bit not to overstep our boundaries. So that came up with 1,465 people. So from that number, number of people, the second bullet over here, number of people times meet duration and nights. And meet duration and nights is also a conservative number because the Hokey November Invitational was actually a three-day meet. Now, you can assume that people from out of town would most likely be eating all three days if they're here, but once again, to keep it conservative, not overstep anything, and to more underestimate, we decided to use the number of nights if they were here, which would be two nights, and then we multiplied the number of nights by $21, $21.70, and that $21.70 came from our survey. That was the number of, the amount of money spent per day, per person. So all that was multiplied together, and from the Hokey November Invitational, $63,000 was brought into the community, estimated, from just this meet alone. And then, so we essentially did that with a lot, with our lodging too, and with meals, and total from the 19 meets, we had a total of $8 million, which is about $698,000 in tax revenue, with the tax rate on meals being 7.5%. So just kind of summarize everything, there were 19 meets, which is where all those numbers come from, 8,257 total swimmers, and with 80% of those swimmers being non-local, so people bringing money into the community. And then estimated 15,000 total visitors, because we, if you multiply that number by 2.5 once again, which was estimated to be about 20,000 hotel rooms, and $1.78 million brought into the community via lodging, which was about $160,000 in lodging revenue, which was 9%. And then this shows, the green is the revenue shortfall of the Christiansburg Aquatics Center, and just from the lodging tax and meal tax revenue that's coming in from these meets, you can see that those numbers account for more than the revenue shortfall of the Aquatics Center.
All right, so now we're going to move into the explanation of the impact model. Before we do that, there are a couple of important terms that I just wanted to go over quickly. So it measured three different types of effects. There's a direct effect, which is the operational characteristics and expenditures of the firm in question, which is the CAC. So we have salaries, purchase of pool chemicals, anything like that that you need to purchase. The second is an indirect effect. This is the value of additional economic demands. So this is purchases from local suppliers. It's still operational characteristics. The third is the induced or household effect, which is the way that people that get their salary from the Aquatics Center spend their money in the local community. And finally, the multiplier effect, which is kind of an economic tool that we can use to estimate changes that result from changes in different sectors of the economy. So just to go over this again, where we got our information for our analysis, financial data that was provided to us by the CAC, balance sheets, financial statements, stuff like that, tax data that we collected from the towns of Christiansburg, our patron survey that we implemented over two meets and captured about 250 individuals, and the in-plan's built-in data. So the in-plan is our modeling software, and it comes with built-in data packages that are collected from government agencies. What we didn't include was the transportation cost. We decided that we wanted to keep the survey brief, and also that we thought transportation would be difficult to estimate since there are so many options for purchasing gas. All right, so this is our table of results from our in-plan analysis, broken down, as you can see, direct, indirect, induced, and then broken down to aquatic purchases, meals and lodging, and total impact. So the number that I'd like to highlight here is in the bottom right corner, the $14.76 million. That is the estimated total impact of the Aquatics Center in Montgomery County. So as you can see, that's a tremendous number broken down over several different sectors. All right, so just a graphic representation of that, this pie chart represents the total economic impact, $14.7 million, that the Aquatics Center has, while this red slice here, 7.09%, represents the operational shortfall of the Christiansburg Aquatics Center. So if you think of it as an individual firm, you can, you know, you might only see the revenue shortfall. But if you look at the Aquatics Center as part of Montgomery County as a whole, part of the town of Christiansburg as a public good, you can see that its impacts and benefits greatly outweigh the immediate losses of the center.
And not all the impacts are financial. The Aquatics Center does have 88 employees, 75 part-time and 13 full-time, but also from the added traffic that the Aquatics Center brings in from out of town, hotels and restaurants have to make up for this by hiring more employees. Now, these are estimated numbers, as the in-plan software that we use is very rigid and doesn't account for efficiency or inefficiency, but overall, it estimates that 281 jobs are created by the Aquatics Center in Montgomery County. So in the end, all of our data has been put into a fact sheet, and it's actually going to be published through Virginia Cooperative Extension. So if anyone wants to see these results, it should be coming out around in January, is our estimate, and you can find it online. You can look up the Coal Center at Virginia Tech, and they post the publications there as well. So just to round everything out, we found that there was a $14.7 million impact on the county, 281 jobs are created, and there's a very big impact on the area. So we want to thank everyone that helped us with this project. We want to thank you for inviting us here tonight. We really appreciate you coming here. And if anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Yes.
So you're saying that the Aquatics Center is bringing in a little bit less than 15 million per year, is that what you were saying?
So with this impact model, not all of it is money that's coming from outside to inside Montgomery County. It's, some of that is being brought into the county from people that are visiting the Aquatics Center from out of town, but this, this total 14.7 million number is the amount of economic activity within Montgomery County that is stimulated by the Aquatics Center's presence, with a portion of that being money coming from outside, and some of that being, like, the induced effect, which, you know, could employees here use their money that they make to purchase things in the local economy.
So I guess then, with the conclusions drawn then, the fourth, that these community hours, that would be benefited by having a facility such as this, I mean, if you could draw the comparison across, say, Blacksburg, for instance, would they experience the same type of benefit had the facility been built in Blacksburg?
Well, it's Montgomery County that's involved.
Right, which includes Blacksburg.
I understand, but I'm talking about, yeah, the Blacksburg taxpayer who don't pay for this.
I agree.
So that's why, that's my question.
That was going to be my question about, is this more of a, I mean, you mentioned county several times, right? The town of Christiansburg actually is the one who built the facility and managed, managed it, pays for it, but do you mean more of a regional impact, not just Montgomery County, but Floyd's, maybe you asked, you think it would?
The way the impact model works, it looks at the locality, and the way, the way the data package is structured, we had to focus on county level. So this is just for Montgomery County.
Okay.
So it also, but that's a good question. It brings up a lot of, you know, who's benefiting most from the Aquatics Center's presence, and how should the cost of running and operating the Aquatics Center be distributed among the various local governments within Montgomery County? And also, it opens up the door to researching how it affects the surrounding counties like Floyd, and also how it affects the, just all the different local governments within, within this region. But this is a preliminary study, just to get an, this sort of a snapshot idea of what the Aquatics Center does and what the impacts are. So we was hoping to bring more information to these local governments that you guys can continue the discussion on policy and figure out how most efficiently to pay for this.
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, it was very interesting.
We'll go get a copy of this somewhere out right.
Yes, yes. When it's published in January, it will be available, but we can definitely get you any information that we, that we have.
Any further questions? Again, thank you so much. There is. Dr. Greiner to address counsel regarding downtown parking study?
Hi, my name is Diane Bobbin, and I am faculty in Urban Affairs and Planning at Virginia Tech. I'm here to talk about a study my students did in the spring, and I don't have any students with me because I got them all graduated. So it's just me to come here and talk about this. The interesting thing about this is that it came about because of some rumors we heard about businesses trying to come into downtown Christiansburg and not being able to provide enough parking, so finding some routes to go. The other interesting thing is that I had a whole bunch of students in my studio class, in a seminar class, and I think only two of them had been to downtown Christiansburg in Virginia Tech, which says a little bit about how attractive downtown Christiansburg is to students, and I think that was one of the key issues that they thought about. So what I want to do is just take a couple of minutes here, and anybody, I have additional copies available. If anybody would like me to send them a copy of the parking study, please let me know, and I'm happy to email it to you, provide you electronic copy, send you a hard copy version. I just have enough for town council tonight. So the idea here was just to try and figure out what's going on, and I'm going to come back to these recommendations, but the students had a number of recommendations, first of all, about, you know, zoning and parking strategies, and then also just about the level of interest in downtown Christiansburg. So to start with, I want to talk about what we used as downtown in the comprehensive plan. That little brown blob down there is what the comprehensive plan calls downtown. When I, when I talked with, about this study in front of planning commission a couple of months ago, one of the things they said is, well, that's not what we consider downtown. It was a little bit of an issue for me, like when we talk about downtown, we talk about something different, so the comprehensive plan is not consistent with, with the conversation. But in any case, that's what we used for our study. We divided that area into a number of districts, just for the students to have something manageable to collect data on, so it's not really important that you know what those districts are. We don't have the data to divide it up by that. We did it for downtown. So the first thing we did is we did an inventory of how many parking spaces there are downtown, and we found that there are nearly 3,000 spaces. This is everything. This things in public parking areas, on-street parking, private areas, right? So you have 27 acres of downtown dedicated to parking. The next thing the students did was they looked at, you know, where are those parking spaces? Most of them are in surface parking lots. A few of them were in on-street spaces, a couple, a couple of those, 11 spaces were found in alleyways or on driveways. And then the third column there, we looked at what, who could use those spaces unrestricted means, anybody can drive up and park in that space, there's no restriction. 852 of those spaces were user-restricted. That means that it says for customers of this particular facility or establishment only, or for the, you know, judges, or, you know, whatever it is. 324 were time-restricted. This is one-hour parking, put money in the meter, and those kinds of things, and 119 spaces were for handicap. So the interesting thing about this is that if you look at this, there's a lot of parking downtown. So the question is, why do people think there isn't a lot of parking downtown? I know people over here who've already complained about parking on their street are going to be mad at me for talking about it like this, but why do people feel there isn't a lot of parking downtown? And what can you do about it? What are other people doing? I will, I will note here, the left-hand bar there, of the spaces that are there, we have 2,970 spaces. One of the things the students did was they said, based on current zoning, the requirements under current zoning, how many spaces do you need at a minimum? And there are 385 parking spaces downtown in excess of the minimum required under zoning, okay? So overall, there isn't really much of a limit of parking. And again, I go back to, it probably depends on how you define downtown. So then we looked at during different times of the day and different days of the week, how many spaces are actually filled with a car? And the dark blue is how many spaces are filled, and the light blue is how many spaces are vacant.
Good question. I actually do not mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's all right.
But in just looking at the chart you gave, is the very first one up there, I want you to go back.
This one?
No, no, the one that actually showed, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Now, between six and three, that's, that's our main street, if I recall. So is it customary for a, again, locality such as ours to consider our downtown just the main street, or is usually to encompass more of a, isn't it, it's much bigger than?
Every locality is different, right? I mean, if you go to Madison, there is only one street, right?
But, but as something our size, is that the way we should be looking at, or should we expand beyond our general board?
Well, I, I think, again, it depends, right? And I'm not saying that this should be downtown, this is what you call downtown in a comprehensive plan, but maybe that's something that needs to be done, is an evaluation of what constitutes downtown. If you want to focus on downtown development, on economic development, on parking downtown, you know, do you really want to go all the way out and cover, you know, the middle school property, you know, and things like that? And I will say, you know, the middle school property, I think we had 152 parking spaces on that site, right? So that's contributing, but one of the fascinating things for me is, even if you've decided, which I did, you park on the middle school site, if you drive, you would think, well, I have to go out and go around and come down, but if you park on the middle school site and walk, downtown is actually really close.
It's very close.
And I think that's part of the problem. That's one of the things that the students notice too, is if they drove things, stuff feels much farther apart.
That's the current.
Therefore, downtown becomes only main street. But if you are a more pedestrian-oriented facility, and people know where they can park and how fast it is to just walk from one place to the other, then downtown could actually be better.
Well, the reason I ask that question is that would give us a good idea as far as pedestrian accommodations, as far as allowing people to navigate on foot or non-motorized transportation.
And to figure out how they do that. So that's a good question.
Thank you.
Again, I don't know that I have a specific answer. So what you see is that at any given day, at any given time of the day, now, what's, what's interesting about this is it was spring. We did data collection during the winter, but as it happened, the week that we picked was the good weather week, and not the week that we had, you know, inches of snow, frigidly cold, temperatures and things, because what I know is students won't actually go out and collect data in that, so they drive to the drive-by. So what you see from this graph is that at any time of the day, any day of the week, you have at least 2,000 parking spaces downtown that are vacant. Now, those parking spaces may not be where you want them or you need them, but there's lots and lots of spaces. Now, this includes the middle school, this includes the churches, right? This includes parking spaces on private property. So this is not, you know, there's thousands and thousands of on-street parking spaces, but overall, the amount of parking that's available is way beyond anything that you really need. And what you'll find in the report is there are some maps that show you by day and time, and of course, so, for example, at 12:30 on Monday, what you have is, you know, very few spaces filled, but the lot behind the town wall, right, is completely full. So you have an uneven distribution, and this is one of the things that you'd have to work out, which we did not really look at, is where are those spaces located, and where are the, where is the demand for parking located, and how are those two things related or not related? The next thing that we did was we said, okay, so now what we want to know is, how is Christiansburg compared to other localities when we look at their zoning, right? So if we look at Christiansburg zoning, are you like other places? And we looked at about 18 other localities, said, what do other localities require? The green here shows, the white ones mean that, that Christiansburg is just about like its comparison localities. The green ones mean that the comparison localities actually have more stringent requirements than Christiansburg, and the, the green ones on the right-hand side mean that Christiansburg is a little more stringent than, than other localities. But overall, I would say there's not a huge amount of difference that, you know, where you have a little more stringent requirement, you're not going to get hundreds of more parking spaces required, so I'm just.
You know, I might have missed it, but this parking availability, does that include the new parking garage?
Yes.
It's okay, good.
Yes. So it does include the garage, I, and I think the user-restricted spaces includes the judges area, right?
That's the question I have. I see that you had your survey on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I see that you had your survey on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday. Did you not take into consideration Tuesday and Thursday, which are the general district court days, which will have more traffic for a length of time?
We did not, because students had classes on those days and couldn't get out. But I don't think it's going to be a lot, when you have 2,000 spaces, you don't have 2,000 more people coming to park a car. It will be heavier, right? You're correct. But it will not be, they thought they were capturing it with a Wednesday, but it's Tuesday and Thursday. I understand that. The next thing that we did was we looked at the Institute for Transportation Engineering and what they have is what they call parking generation statistics. And so what they do is, ITE collects studies that people do all over the country, they send them the results of their studies. And then they aggregate the information from all of these studies. And in those studies, they say, well, how many spaces are actually demanded by a particular use through these studies? And how many spaces do people usually require? And where, and so here it's, where's Christiansburg the same? And where's Christiansburg a little higher? And there are a couple of things here, multifamily, you're a little bit higher, warehouse spaces, you're a little bit higher, motel. But again, not enough that I would say that your requirements aren't aligned with what other people are doing. The problem with this is that the ITE study, and they admit it, almost everything they have in there is suburban. So it's not downtown stuff. So what this suggests is that while you are consistent with other localities, and while you are consistent with the ITE studies, in fact, what you have are suburban zoning requirements for parking and not downtown parking requirements. So we looked at, what are other localities doing in terms of best practices? So they tell you the localities where we looked at the zoning. And these are the kinds of things that they're doing. A lot of localities, Blacksburg, Stanton, and a lot of other places, give either a full or a partial exemption for properties in downtown. So if you have a new development downtown, you do not need to add parking. And this goes back to your earlier question about how should we define downtown? Because it may be that if we're going to do a parking exemption, that would be a fairly small area as opposed to this huge, you know, area that you have outlined in the comprehensive plan. So there might be a central business district in the downtown area and, you know, things like that. Partial exemptions, so there are places that give an exemption to parking for particular kinds of uses. Whereas if somebody is putting residential downtown, they wouldn't get a complete exemption. They have to provide parking for residential, but not the, maybe not the commercial uses. Some use shared parking. I know that shared parking is now part of the conversation here in Christiansburg, and so that's really good. Municipal parking infrastructure, a number of localities have either, they either collect fees in lieu of providing parking and they use that to construct parking garages and things. Stanton, for example, created a full exemption downtown, but filled the parking garage in order to cover that. So the municipality takes over responsibility for providing enough parking downtown. A lot of them provide support for alternative transportation, bus systems, bicycling, you know, walking paths and things so that people can either not drive at all or park farther away and then walk. And then the last thing is wayfinding and signage. And this was a kind of a key for us, which is, if you don't realize that it's only a two-minute walk, whereas it might even be a four-minute drive and then, you know, try to find parking in addition, then you're not likely to walk because you don't know how you get from one place to the other. How close is it to take your kids from the library, you know, downtown for you to get a cup of coffee, for example? You know, those types of things. And so one of the places in North Carolina, and you'll see the Mount Blacksburg, where they put up a little sign that says, this direction, five minutes to a great park. This way, two minutes to a good cup of coffee, those kinds of things. And so they felt that signage is one of the ways that you can really improve this stuff. So we come back to the recommendations. The first one is that you eliminate or reduce your parking requirements downtown. So that you don't have some program zoning requirements for your parking in the downtown. And again, this may require a new definition of what's downtown, that you implement your shared parking strategy. And this could be also letting people know where they can park for events and things, if they come downtown. And if the lot behind the mall is completely used up, where else can you go and park? Maybe working with the churches if they don't need all of their spaces, that they could cordon off a few spaces for use by the public during the week. Improved facility design and maintenance, one of the things the students noticed, and this was particularly problematic during the inventory portion of the study, is you go to a parking lot and there are no lines. So you don't actually know how many spaces you have. We had to measure them off and figure out how many spaces there were. But what this means is people come in, they pull in, and they leave a lot of space between cars. They don't, they create, you know, strange kinds of aisleways and things like that. And so you may not know exactly how many spaces you have or how much parking you could provide because of the lack of lines and things on the existing facilities. Next, we're about a positive pedestrian environment. If you walk down Main Street, you pass Morgan Justice Office where the windows are blacked out. You pass Charlie's Chinese where there's curtains up in the window. You pass the Humane Society, which has the windows covered over. And so even though you've spent lots and lots of money to create these great sidewalks and stuff, what the pedestrian sees is nothing, right? There are a couple of good places. The optical shop is open and glass and, you know, lit up and things. But there's a lot of stuff downtown where, you know, an office has taken over what used to be a storefront. So what's sitting in the window is like, you know, somebody's briefcase in a table they're not using in the office, and that's not a positive environment. Provide additional wayfinding cues. I've already talked about, you know, how far is it? One of the interesting things the students did, which I don't have a slide of it here, is they looked at, how far is it to walk from the middle of the Walmart parking lot to the front door versus what is that distance downtown? And you can see in there, there's a big red blob, which is the Walmart parking lot. And then, and you can see how much that covers. And yet, people think that it's farther to walk downtown than it is to walk to get to Walmart. So one of the things the students did is they walked from places like Pizza Inn to the courthouse, from the school to the library, from, you know, different places. And then they went to Walmart and they parked in the front and they got out and they walked and they did different errands. One of the errands was to pick up the stuff for peanut butter and jelly. So I have to go get bread and I have to go get peanut butter, I have to check out. And they looked at the difference in the time for doing those sorts of things. And that's just a perception thing, which has to do with educating the public about what's happening. So those wayfinding cues about how close it really is and where you can park. And then, once you park somewhere, if you can't see it, how do you get to it so people know, you know, where the pathways are? And then the last one was to build interest in new development, commerce, and tourism activity. And one of my students has done what's known as the Bike Centennial Route. She's actually ridden her bike three times across the United States. And the Bike Centennial Route runs right through downtown Christiansburg. But you have no facilities here for bicyclists to stop. So they don't stop in Christiansburg because in order to stay at a hotel or find a place to stay, they have to go out on a 460 business, you know, in the busy area by the mall. And they won't make that extra couple of miles at the end of a 60-mile day to go find a place to stay and then drive, you know, ride several miles back to get back on the trail to go. And so one of the things she suggested is that you have some space that might be a hostel, it might be just a room, might be a place to park a bike, might be a park where you would allow them to camp overnight, just to allow the bicyclists. But, you know, it's things like that where you're not taking advantage of something like the Bike Centennial Route. And there are probably other things as well to draw people to downtown. So that's all I have and I'll be happy to answer questions from anybody here if they have anything to ask.
How much input did you receive or did you seek input from the town planning department on this?
Oh, we didn't. I did this by ourselves. This was a project for me to, you know, something for me to have the students go to Christiansburg and set a place that they had not been. So this was not, you know, sometimes when we do projects, we're doing them because the planning staff had asked us to do this. But Nicole and I didn't have any kind of a conversation about this before I started. So I caught her unawares in all this.
You caught several of us.
Yeah.
Let me ask you something. Can you look at all these parking spaces? I realize you're talking middle school.
Right, right.
As far as convenience, do you factor in age now or capabilities?
Well, you can't. We did not. But certainly if you were going to do this in greater detail, you would have to figure out, you know, because I could walk for miles and up and down hills and all kinds of things. And we do recognize that not everybody can do that. And so, yes, some people do need spaces that are much closer and much more convenient. But the idea here is also, you know, if you park in one place and you have a couple of things to do, then you shouldn't go back to your car because it should be convenient enough for you to do a number of things without parking to go to the library and then parking to come downtown for this and parking to go back up here to the store and parking to go to the courthouse.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, the planning commission had done their own parking study some time ago. But I think maybe that most people do not realize that we have no municipality-owned parking lot. The one behind the old town mall is that private parking lot. And you may have a sign that looks pretty bad saying public parking, but that is not public parking. The only public parking we have in Christiansburg is downtown's own structure. So I didn't want to just add that.
Well, yeah, there's public and then there's public, right? So it's public parking, it's public parking as in anybody, as in it's unrestricted in terms of who can use it. And then there's public parking where they say, where the municipality is taking responsibility, building a park garage, having a parking lot.
That's the county and, oh, that's county property.
Anything else, gentlemen? Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is our citizens' comments section. We allow citizens to come forward and address counsel on issues of concern or general subjects. I will ask that you come forward. We have a podium set up way over there, but if you'd rather stand at your seat, that's more convenient. We'll ask you to do that. We'll ask you to give your name and address, address your comments to the chair, which is me. And we're going to have a limited five minutes per speech. Thank you. Anyone here to address counsel?
Thank you. My name is Catherine Dowling. I represent the Villas of Peppers Ferry because we're a condominium complex representing 148 homes. We prefer to have our comments and writings and pass those. Here we are again, the Villas, talking about a stoplight. This is nothing new to us. Our purpose tonight is to remind you of a commitment that you gave us to commission a traffic survey analysis. And that was to be about two months after completion of the highway, that would be the middle of January. So we would like to think we can find that premium. It's relevant to point out two additional issues. And we had our first traffic accident last week, and it was in the exact manner that we predicted would happen. So regardless of a stoplight or a traffic analysis, excuse me, that accident occurred in the exact same manner that we feel like there will be many more. The traffic picks up speed once they cross the railroad tracks and the curve is there. So you're negating the perception that you can pull out safely. There's not a safe place to wait between the westbound and the eastbound lanes until it's clear to complete the entire left turn in one maneuver. There's no safe alternative to waiting because your car is sticking out in a travel lane. It's extremely challenging to judge this traffic coming around the curves from both directions and to find a safe gap for completing that turn. In addition, there is now a huge expanse of black asphalt and it's created a black hole, a very unsafe driving conditions due to insufficient lighting. I am told as of tonight by the councilman that there is planned lighting. Could we have a confirmation of that? Great.
Part of the VDOT project is supposed to start in January, sometime in January, complete lighting.
Great.
Doesn't mean that they will all be lit in January. We're getting started on that.
Wonderful. We have had residents that have lived there for almost 10 years that are pulling into the wrong lane because you just can't see at night. So we anticipate that with great speediness. I invited councilman Court Hall to take that ride at night and we would ask all of you to do the same, as well as to come out and try to negotiate a left turn coming from Quinn Stewart, turning left onto 114. To quote councilman Hall's response to my letter of concern, "The black expanse of black asphalt is quite large and it does make it difficult to see. I've driven that route about a dozen times since completion. From the Holiday Inn until you reach the gas station, the blackness is large and difficult to traverse. Furthermore, it makes seeing any lines on the streets and especially turning lanes very difficult and dangerous." Can we count on a traffic survey in January? And we can count on lighting.
I don't know about the traffic survey in January. That is a VDOT project that they go.
We can request it at that time if they will not.
That would be two months after completion.
Six months after the project is open, is what they said.
We can request it sooner than the six months.
I know the lights. So I don't like you're in and people are usually driving and so we can't anticipate getting active.
Mr. Mayor, my last time we addressed this, of course, we anticipate it completed a little bit sooner than it's close to completed. But we were looking at January to request that and anticipating March, April, time frame to get a response. I'd like to see us continue to have a push to that.
We've already talked to VDOT and agreed to do it. They won't wait a few months.
Since we're on, you know, since this is public and we're being recorded, I speak only for myself, but I have conversations with other councilmen. I'm not aware of any council member that is not interested in addressing this properly. We're not dragging our feet. We want to follow state practices to make these decisions. But I will say, speaking for myself and also for my conversations with fellow councilmen, there's no one that I'm aware of on council that is trying to do anything other than do the right thing here, okay?
We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And their reasons are not valid.
No, ma'am.
All of us have driven the area that you're talking about and we all realize what a dangerous situation it's in, really. And we're, Mr. Helms is working with VDOT as best he can and we're going to try to correct the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper.
Mike, I just want to make, can I get an estimate on when the study will approximately begin in lieu of a couple of months from now or an end?
It's like six months, so we'll see if we can get it to center.
So they're looking, thinking it's going to be completed and we're talking lights, spring?
We're going to remind them in April, but.
Are we talking about the straight lights or the traffic lights?
Study.
Study on the traffic lights, the traffic study.
The traffic, yeah. And what VDOT, what VDOT is interested in for council's benefit and the public is, there's been a major change there with traffic, okay? And it takes people a while to settle into their new routines. You know, what are they going to do? How are they going to get from point A to point B? And we're all doing that. I use, I don't turn on Quinn Stewart every day, but I'm on that road every day. And I'm still feeling my way around. And actually, one of the great travesties that we did was not to demand that Stafford drive and logistic line up. I'm seeing that, that's in my face every day now, too. Those should have lined up. But to give traffic, everyone a chance to, you know, for traffic to settle down, six months is a nice number. But there's no reason why, you know, something less than that is not going to bet what they're interested, what we're all interested in is to see what the new pattern is going to be. But three to four months, you know, there's no reason why we can't.
I wish you'd find, I think, unified approach to this by the councilman and the mayor together on this. And I'm sure, I would hope that would carry some weight as well as asking for these things to be done. But I also hear what you're saying, Mr. Stipes, that with a new traffic flow, you want people to settle back into it. Because the last thing we want would be numbers that are either underrepresented because people simply aren't now utilizing it in the highest volume as they were before. But again, first priority is obviously the lights update, which I'm glad to hear will be started within the next 30, 40 days, it sounds like.
My mother lives out, has to drive, so I'm very interested.
Jim was on very injured.
I go through there several times a day. That traffic, accidents, as you mentioned, was a person that tried to make a left-hand turn?
Yes.
That left wrong, no?
So this gets passed on this. So, this gets passed on this one. Very good. Anyone else that would like to address council? I hear this gentleman, First Amendment, would go.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, my name is Jeremy Pedrati. I'm still on the board of the NRV USPCA, which is the New River Valley Bowling Association. Prepare some that you can take home with you. This started back over a year ago when I, and a couple of my board members attended the tourism committee over at the Light Bible College well over a year ago. And one of the things that was brought up is how we can attract more outside, I guess, people to the town to create revenue for the town as far as taxes and get people to maybe come see our town and maybe like it so much they want to move here. We are fortunate enough that we bitted on the Virginia State Tournament Open, which will be in Christiansburg for the months of May and June, over several weekends. Included in your folder is a copy of the brochure that is about it. At every bowling center in the state of Virginia, there's an introduction page on the back here or in the middle that tells you about who we are, what we do, things we've done in the past. And it's actually great that we showed up when the call center folks were here because we actually have some numbers of people in attendance all the way back from 1997. So if you look for the estimated 2015, next year, not only do we, are we going to host the USBC Open for the state of Virginia, but we also have the USBC Youth State Tournament. And it tells you the attendance that we have estimated for the USBC Open is 3,085 participants. And if you, we only times ours times two, well, eight times theirs by two and a half. So if you take the three tournaments that we have coming up, it's going to be close to 27,000 people. And it's going to be in the months of May, June, and July. And actually, does it run into part of August or does it just make it in the first week of August? So during the slow times, there's no tech games and things like that going on. One of the things that we try to do as a board is, we wanted to get the tournaments. We compete against other cities in Virginia, Virginia Beach, Richmond, Manassas, Charlottesville. You can see some of the hosts of some of the other tournaments all the way here on the back page and some of the things that come up. Apologize upfront for not being on the agenda, but we did want to be here before the fiscal year ended. I don't know exactly when ends, if it's December, but ends before then. I guess what we're trying to do is look for the town, is trying to reach out and if there's different ways that the town can maybe assist our board in some ways or maybe give us some ideas to make the experience for the people that are coming in from out of town better. They're going to, they're, most of the people that come in town, they're going to bowl over the whole weekend. So they're going to come in town Friday, they're going to stay Friday night, they're going to stay Saturday night, they're going to leave on Sunday. So you're looking over May, June, July, and the first weekend of August, 20-something thousand people coming today, which if you use their numbers that they used, that's a big chunk of change. And we also have hosted senior tournaments. We have a lot of participants in the area, not only in the New River Valley, but in surrounding areas of Roanoke. You know, they have a couple bowling centers there. We get a lot of people from there that come and bowl at our bowling center. We've made some changes to the bowling center. We've got Terry Stike here as owner. One of the things that we've recently done to try to make it more family-friendly is we've got rid of the pool tables that were in there. We put in a laser tag system. We put in some video games and arcade, so it's more like a Chuck E. Cheese and family-friendly place. You don't have to go to Roanoke, you say? So those are the things we've done. And this is just a general introduction of us and what we've been trying to do to help and assist the town. And if there's anyone that can reach out to us or maybe give us some ideas so that we can try to make it successful not only for us, but also for the town and for the people that come. So that A, when we go to bid for tournaments in the future, that the people talk about, say, man, they had that state tournament in Christiansburg and it was awesome. The bowling center was awesome, the people were nice, the place was great, they had stuff to do. So that when we go in the future to bid on future tournaments, our odds of getting one of those bids are that much better.
I have a good question for you.
Sure.
Because I know that when we do it, if it's done, like with the Aquatic Center or if we have a new triple S.A. baseball or softball type tournament, a lot of times it's the, the tournament directors, they'll send information out to the potential teams. Granted, here it's different because there's a lot of individuals, we're not dealing with kids and all. But do you all, do you send, I mean, are there sponsor groups that would send, like, for instance, all those bowling alleys are probably, everybody's pretty much a member of a bowling, they're going to go into bowling national tournament here. So do you all send information out to those particular bowling alleys with our town maps to be able to distribute? So they know where.
If you look on the back of the flyer here, it's in between, there is actually a little small map that doesn't have things on there. And one of the things we were also successful in doing is we did hook up with the Holiday Inn, has the host hotel in town, so it's not in Salem, because half the tournament is actually in Salem and half is in Christiansburg. So instead of, we did work with the Holiday Inn to try to keep the host hotel here, so when the people get the flyer, they sign up, the first place they're going to call is the Holiday Inn in Christiansburg.
Is there, is there any, would it, would it be helpful if you had town maps and things to send?
Absolutely. Anything that we can try to do to, you know, I, some of the ideas that we had is maybe like a care package or something. And Scott Bradley is in attendance with me, and he's actually the president, city president right now of our association, so he might be able to answer a couple of questions.
I was going to suggest, is, same thing that you're talking about, is since Trey Caldwell does this related to the swimming, Brad Anthony does it related to the rec center. If maybe you could get those two people to meet with you briefly and tell you what they're doing to publicize events in town and how they do that and the maps and so forth, it might be beneficial to you.
We do tourism labs anyway.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, get with them and talk about the things that they do. There might, there's more than just tourism maps. And the second thing I want to do is commend you. I have a son who has participated on Thursday nights with the IDA group.
Right.
Over there. And it is tremendous what you folks do for the community that most people in this community do not, are not aware of.
Oh, a lot of them aren't. It takes a lot of volunteers and a lot of help.
I mean, you go over there, and I haven't been over there lately, we used to have the quodys and that over there. There was 200 people there, 100 clients and 100 support people.
Right.
On Thursday nights. And it's just a tremendous claim that you do. Give them the reduced rates and so forth so you can get them in.
And then, and then, you know, our programs that we have for, for our kids on Saturdays as far as youth, if you see in there, you know, we, our association is raised and donated just for local kids in McGurran County, over $20,000 in scholarships, just for kid, local kids here. We have like national, or local, regionalized tournaments every month for kids. We have coaches that when, if they bring their kids in to bowl in the league on Saturday, there's coaches that actually are, you know, there's some of them are PVA card holding members that go and help them teach kids. And we have, actually had six or seven kids that qualified to go to Buffalo that bowled nationals. We had several that did very well. And they all bowl for scholarship money and things like that. And we have a few bowlers that after they're going to get scholarships for bowling to go to college. So we, we do a lot of important things for kids and for seniors and people in the bowling community. And I don't know if I want to open my five minutes, but I'm sure Scott has something to add. But I appreciate you considering.
If, if in Quinn we get with our parks director and the aquatic center director, do we contact Terry to sit down with him? Is he the, is he the day-to-day go-to?
No, he's, he's on, he, he can contact him. He's the owner of the facility. And he kind of, we can't, since he owns the property, us as a board have to consult with him of things that we want to do. But Scott and Terry are the ones that maybe do the majority of the work as far as bidding on the tournaments, going to travel, staying in hotels, networking with the people that make the decisions whether the tournament comes here or goes to Manassas or goes to Richmond or goes to Virginia Beach or goes to North.
Sure. I mean, can we get some contact information?
Absolutely.
Business cards or emails or something that we've got to, got to start somewhere.
Right. And that's what, that's one of the main reasons we came here is to make you aware of what we've been doing to try to help raise some money and stuff for the town and help them do the best we can.
Have you done, you've done this pitch for Lisa?
That's what I was going to add.
The tourism, the head of the tourism department?
Um, no, I think, uh, we, we talked about stuff before, but we, when we go out of town and bid on the stuff, we don't know if we're going to get. We just found out when we got it a few months ago. And actually, this recently, we found out we got the kids. So now we have two of them back to back. And we always have tournaments every year. Some of them are bigger than others, but next year is going to be probably one of the biggest ones that we can, we could possibly have.
I'm glad you mentioned it, Steve. I was going to mention Lisa Legley, which is the McGurran County Tourism. Steve's on the board. I was previously on the board, but that's what we pay six figures for her to do is work with our local businesses to see what they can do.
What they can do once they get there. Tourism. There's a wealth of, there's a wealth of documents available. There's maps, there's restaurant maps, there are restaurant guides. There's a lot of things that we have developed and certainly would have no problem sharing with you all to, to, to get the basics on.
Oh, that's, that's definitely in addition to what the town could do for us specifically. But we do, we are a founding member of this McGurran County Tourism development thing. And when you walk in, the government center on Roanoke Road in Christiansburg, her office is on the bottom floor on the right, and she should be available to any business who's going to put on any type of bid in town to assist them. And I think the downtown Christiansburg group, they, they receive grants or assistance from them. And that's why we put, again, over six figures into this is to make sure our businesses are recognized, not just Blacksburg businesses.
Have you all worked, Mr. Stipes, with her before? When you've had large, this is not the first time you've had a large tournament there.
No, we haven't since 97.
Yes, have you all worked with, well, since the tourism board's been in place, have you all worked with her as far as getting the word out or ways in which to advertise?
We, we've had to her at the tourism thing, and we, we started talking about it, but it sort of got put under the rug in some ways. I don't know why. But we did talk about since 97 to this point of how many, and she's worked with bowling before. But I don't know what materialized.
Terry, you know what I would, Terry, you know what I would do? I, I would try to make an appointment with her, what they've always said there, and then maybe have little things, how she could help you. They say, well, here's some of the things I would like maybe we do. Put up banners, maybe put some signage up there, you know, give her some things to shoot for. She's got money in her account here and, and we support you guys at that point, I think, there.
And one of the things that, that this board does, and again, I'm the bowling center itself, but I'm also on the board. They spend thousands and thousands of dollars to get a tournament to come here and, and, you know, they work every weekend, can you imagine this, every weekend for five, six, seven. So this weekend, this summer, 10 weekends in a row from morning to night. And they put a lot of time in it, and they need some support of, of the town. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of towns are losing their bowling center, and there's a lot of reasons. But we need to keep this one. And, and we've already taken out some lanes to, to compete with other things. And when we take out more, then we will no longer have this. And the 50,000 people that come to this town will no longer be. And, and it's in the making if we don't support that settlement.
Instead of piecemealing all these meetings together, I mean, Barry is one of our, what would you label yourself on the McGurran County Tourism?
One of the board members.
One of the board members. And Steve can too, but maybe get Terry, Lisa Legley, and if Mr. Helms is available, get them all in one place and.
And some of, one thing that I can suggest is we have, we have our board meetings every month. And one of the things, if I can get some contact information, I can invite them to one of our meetings and they can see what we talk about, and we can all kind of brainstorm and see what we can come up with together. Because a lot of stuff we do as a board, you know, we got to vote and approve.
When is your next board meeting?
Sunday.
It's Sunday, it's Sunday at 5:00 o'clock at the bowling center.
At the bowling house?
Yep.
I'd like to echo, appreciate so much you coming. Are you Mr. Paxton?
No, I'm Mr. Pedrati. We weren't on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Well, we, yeah, I agree. We need some contact information. I circled Billy Paxton on here.
Oh, Billy Paxton, he actually.
He's the state tournament director.
He's the state tournament director for the whole state, so he, all the contact, just for the tournament goes to him, but I'll be more than happy. We can write our numbers, email this up, man.
That would, that would be very good. Thank you.
Along the other lines, Mr. Thor saying, if I remember correctly, Barry, Mr. Wingfield is our designated economic development person for the city of the town. Is that correct? Well, that's, sounds to me like a good plug for that, too. Well, again, we're talking about the department heads and so forth with Mr. Wingfield when we, you know, when we've had those discussions, I think that he is our designated economic development. So I'd like some, some follow-up, or I think we agree that some follow-up and connectivity with the Super Bowl is.
We just had the opportunity, we wanted to let you know what was coming, you know, and anything we can try to do to make it good for the town and good for the people that participate in the tournaments is what we want to try to do.
We want to be a part of your success, not a part of your, not unsuccessful. Don't even you say the F-word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Instead, one additional comment in reference to Quinn Stewart Pepper's Ferry issue was that when VDOT does their study, they decide not to put a traffic light in there, could someone please let them know that they need to consider taking out that raised median that blocks the left turn? Because at Stafford, you have, I mean, I used to call them suicide lanes. But at Stafford, you've actually got a safer intersection going out onto Pepper's Ferry now because they do have the suicide lane there. You've got a place you can go. In all probability, what ended up happening, causing this accident was the car got out there and got halfway across the street, which leaves the back end of the car sitting there in Pepper's Ferry Road. The way they've got the intersection designed, even though they've got two nice turn lanes on Pepper's Ferry, it only takes up one lane, which is not wide enough for a car to fit. But I think that needs to be considered. They hit that.
And just for the record, sir, what is your name?
My name is Art Wilson. I do live in Pepper's and Villas.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. You have a last to address council? Hearing no one, I will close the citizens' hearing. We will now enter into the discussions by mayor and council members. Our first item is town action, town council action on council's intention to amend the town development fee schedule in regards to the fees for temporary certificates of occupancy and board of planning, I'm sorry, board of building code appeals hearings and penalty for working without a permit. Public hearing was held on November the 18th, 2014.
I will the council adopt this change in regards to the fees as presented to.
I would second that.
Very good. Motion on second and discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Clerk, would you call or roll?
Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishalalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stines?
Aye.
Councilman Edgencision?
Aye.
I believe that would be six zero. Thank you, ma'am. Next is council's intention to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 30 streets, sidewalks, and other public places in regards to encroachments or obstructions on public property, including provisions for permitting encroachments and obstructions. The public hearing was held November the 18th, 2014.
I make a motion that we implement the adoption to the ordinance, and basically what it does is address existing structures already in there. And it also requires permitting for anything in addition that would be in.
I made some comments to Mr. Wingfield following the last meeting, and those have been addressed because I did not reread. I read it the last time, I didn't reread. But those edits were made.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to throw a motion on the floor that we adopt the recommendations to change in our ordinance.
Just take a moment.
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A second.
I am sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Clerk?
Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
That would be six oh, is that correct? Very good. Move right along. The adjusted agenda, which will be out of the seat, council's intention to adopt an ordinance amending chapter forty-two zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to provisions for private recreational facilities in the I-2 General Industrial District with the conditional use permit.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we amend chapter forty-two zoning to input provisions for private recreation facilities in the I-2 General Industrial District via SCUP.
Second. Motion on the second, any discussion? Hearing none.
Could I get the second?
Who was the second?
The second, Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
That would be six oh. The next item is contingent on the above item, conditional use permit request by Mike Harris, agent of property owner Raymond Myers, for a private recreational facility at three seventy-five Bell Road, tax parcels four ninety-nine dash A dash one F, in the I-2 General Business, General Industrial District.
In light of the previous vote, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the conditional use permit request by Mr. Harris for a private recreational facility at three seventy-five Bell Road in the I-2 General Industrial District.
Mayor, may I read the recommendation from the planning commission, because there are some questions.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to do that?
Yes, sir.
Would the planning commission like to read, or have you got?
Okay.
Okay. This was a long, I mean, this was a lot of discussion, so we will listen to the problem.
I'll shorten it. Start out, therefore, be resolved, Christiansburg Planning Commission recommends that the Christiansburg Town Council approve the conditional use permit with the following conditions. This permit is valid for recreational activities only. Outdoor activities will be limited between eight AM and nine PM. There should be no exercise, no excessive noise between eleven PM and seven AM. This permit is subject inspection approval of all facilities and equipment by the fire marshal, building official, and rescue squad captain. The town of Christiansburg requires that the applications to maintain the facilities and equipment in accordance with Equipment Manufacturing Guidelines. This permit shall be valid for the New River baseball incorporated only and non-transferable. Parking for the operations shall be limited to the existing parking area near the front of the building on the property. This permit shall be subject to review by the planning commission in one year, and all outdoor recreation activities remain thirty feet from existing residential units. Day, the twenty-fourth day of November two thousand fourteen, in the United States.
Mr. Thor, do you still enter your motion?
I would enter my motion, Your Honor, but I would add the conditions as requested by the, by the planning commission.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Second is still in place. Any further discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, there was, during the planning commission, there was a great deal of discussion about, oh, that may be doing things outside the building maybe during the summer, things like that, and that's why those conditions were added in there.
Do you think there are major activities outside, am I reading correctly? Okay. Any further comment? Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
That would be six nothing, six zero, gentlemen. You are approved. Presentation of additional information on the deed of gift from Mrs. Phillips on Flicker Street, Mrs. Phillips.
When I called her and told her that council had agreed to accept the parcel there on Flicker Street, she asked if we'd covered the taxes, we got the taxes for second half of the year and the town taxes. And the town taxes are a hundred and twelve dollars, didn't give a cent, and the town taxes were thirty-three dollars, maybe nine cents. But our attorney, Mr. Phil, and I did need it, that we had approval to spend about two hundred dollars to buy that lot, so I'm asking...
I'd make a motion that we do so.
I would approve, I'd second that.
A motion in the second that we complete this transaction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Resolution in support of the New River Valley Planning District Commission name change to the New River Regional Commission. Mr. Mishell Walter, you want to give me something on that?
Sure. I brought this up, I believe, last meeting, that this was coming to the council. It's actually, right now, named the New River Valley Planning District Commission, but a lot of municipalities or general citizens confuse it with municipalities planning commission, which it does, it can assist in planning and zoning with community if requests is studied, but mostly they're, they're there to look out for the regional interest. I'm lucky enough to serve on this board, it means to Gilaski, to Paul Floyd, Everytown, Narrows, Perrisburg, I believe, Giles County, Boyd County. And instead of the New River Valley Planning District Commission, we are going to change our name to New River Regional Commission, which more fits the job title that we require. So, again, Kevin's done a great job, which is the director out there, all the members do a great job. And this is just one step in Kevin, you know, taking this forward in this, this commission. So, I recommend it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
A motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none since at this, that we have authority, Mrs. Clerk, would you call the council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
All right, that is six oh.
I assume we will notify some way, shape, or form, Kevin, on this, an email, is that sufficient?
We'll sign the resolution.
We'll sign the resolution. Very good. So do we have a motion to approve that resolution, or are we done with it?
I thought we just did.
Very good, plus enough, passion, passion, take care of it. Next is council action on overtime bonus for town employees under the newly adopted compensation plan.
Make a motion, we accept the overtime bonus that we all agreed to at the work session. And I think we're all clear on what that is, there's no need to go through it unless there's a...
With the cabinet one thousand dollars.
Say again?
With the cabinet one thousand dollars.
Exactly as we all agreed to, seeing that we agreed to it.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I do.
All righty, any further discussion?
I just, I think that was an excellent work session. I thought it was an excellent discussion that we came up with that, and I appreciate all the people on this.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you very much. Council action on, on the proposed Sunset Cemetery Master Plan. It was presented to us two weeks ago?
I make a motion, we adopt the plan as presented, actually look through it, it's fantastic. The planning, the phasing of the improvements gives us a blueprint. I know the neighbors, I know at least one neighbor that's very happy and has actually expressed that to me, but I appreciate, this is a very professional study, appreciate the work the cemetery committee did on it. Some of the cost comparisons have given us a lot of food for thought, but I'll make a motion to adopt the plan as presented.
I'll second that, but I just want to clarify one thing. That included the thing that Eli mentioned, that was an exception to the printed document, which involved closing of a roadway.
Oh, okay.
Right.
In the plan, the, 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 not the closure, the exception, at least that it wasn't very, very clear.
Mr. Thor, I think the minutes of the cemetery committee will reflect their intention and their vote to keep those roads open as long as possible. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we had the cemetery, I was a member, original member of the cemetery committee not very long, it got changed pretty quick, but how long have they, have we actually had our cemetery committee, or maybe ask Mr. Carter, it's not been a long, long time.
We...
The reason I say that is, we, we...
It's been almost two years.
Well, for the longest time, we, we have that, and this is something this, us, the group decided to add, and this was what we kind of hoped for at the, from the inception. And I just want to express my appreciation for the hard work, for coming up with this. I know it's been a process, and I know it's been your hard for a long time, but I do appreciate all the hard work that you all put into it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that, to being on the cemetery committee as the liaison, that now the master plan has been approved, then it's going to give the cemetery committee, and money has been already appropriated by the council to extend, build, put in some more plots, and do some more surveying work, and then also to work on, to work on the Columbaria. And that money has also been allocated by council, so now the cemetery committee will be able to move forward on this. And we appreciate your support.
Is that in case some of your money is in reserve?
Right, that's, that's not in addition to what's already reserved for.
Correct. There has already been money put aside, yeah.
That is a, I echo council's statements about it being a, a very, very well-written document. Miss Mishell Walter, that is, I guess, due to the newly named New River Regional Commission, they did a great job on this, and have done a lot of work for us in the past.
They have.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second to approve that cemetery plan?
Before we vote, can we just, I noticed, I got a comment from a citizen, not necessarily from any board members, that can we get that dumpster up to what we require our business to town code? I'm not, I haven't, when I go to cemeteries, usually to visit family gravesides, they not come up to see if the dumpster's up the code, but if we could make sure that, or at least the commission explore that, make sure we get, get that within our standard code. But I do agree, and I want to support it with, with the exceptions that the cemetery committee put in there for roads.
Got that, Barry?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk? You call a roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dishon?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Mishell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Councilman McHushen?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you, gentlemen. Council to follow up on a discussion and receive an update regarding the intersections of Quinn W. Stewart Boulevard and Stafford Drive with Pepper's Ferry Road. I believe we had that earlier, is that...
That was what I was going to report.
And we, so we've already, we've already reported, are you all satisfied with, with this?
If we agreed to when we're going to request it from VDOT, I know it's at six months.
We'll go back and ask them if they do it sooner than six months.
Yeah, well, let's be more specific, I guess, or, it's still a little fuzzy, so what are we...
We'll shoot for two to three months after lights are in.
I'd say no less than three, but three, three to four is adequate, I think. I mean, I think it's, it's going to capture what they're wanting to capture.
Mr. Handel, I, I have listed an agenda to provide the residents with the update, I've been in contact with quite a few of them. Is there anything that the council that we can do, aside from telling you that we'd like to have this expedited? Anything else that we can do that would help VDOT two expedite this?
They've been very cooperative, I think they'll truly, if they feel it's appropriate for...
And I believe, and in response to, and correct me if I'm wrong, our council and Ms. Attorney, but the question was answered, asked earlier about the, whether or not if VDOT approved a light at that particular intersection, if it could then be, there could be some things, modifications made about the dividers. And just to reiterate, I mean, we, we had a legal study done on this, that particular aspect. VDOT doesn't have to approve the stoplight, they have to do the study, it gives us the information, and then we get to factor in, well, I look at, we get to factor in our subjective elements, knowing our community, like we know the demographics of the area, those things, and the new patterns, which of course we factored into VDOT, but when you think we're determined, based on the proprietary functions and all, about our liability, that we do have the power to do that, if necessary. So, but again, not to presuppose that would even happen, but just in case, that's still good, that doesn't, that doesn't end the day. VDOT doesn't dictate, I'm thinking of Christiansburg, if we have a stoplight or not, it's a strong indicator, but it doesn't dictate ultimately what we do. That's my, my position. But I appreciate you all having listed an agenda, I appreciate the update, then Mr. Helms.
Okay. Discussion regarding the option to sell naming rights on town facilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I think I was the original one that talked to Mr. Helms about this, and I, this is nothing that's eaten away at me or anything like that, but I think everybody has seen, like in Roanoke, the Roanoke Civic Center now is the Burglum Center, and I believe that Burglums, I think it was a million dollars for something like ten years, made, also allocated a car and a year, and I was just wondering if council might be interested in talking about, maybe doing something here maybe for the rec center or, or the aquatic center? And I'm, I'm not, I'm not fighting for it or anything like that, I just thought council might want to talk about it and, and consider this way, as a way to, you know, increase revenue.
I think it's an interesting thought, I mean, it's, I, I think it, it might have some potential.
Unfortunately, we don't have a civic center like Roanoke does, but I'd like to see it sometime, and I'm not saying set up a special work session, but I'd like to see sometime we have a work session taking place, that this be one of the items added to it, and we can sort of do a roundtable on it.
I think that's a real good idea, and I think we have some paperwork on that. Is that right, Mr. Helms, concerning what, what Roanoke...
According to your packet, did we...
Yeah, okay.
It's a longer discussion, I will admit. When I first heard the idea, I thought...
The Christiansburg Aquatic Center will be closing in fifteen minutes.
You set that up?
So where are we, all this?
We'll have a work session sometime. Let's wait until we have a work session here.
I, I thought that, I thought the idea was sort of cheesy at first, but it's sort of grown on me a little bit, at least the concept, and I think it's worthy of a discussion, a full-fledged discussion. I think it's...
I'll second that.
But I think we can, we can have a more lengthy discussion.
I, I would like to have a work session on this, I'll tell you upfront, I have absolutely no interest in pursuing this, but I don't vote, so...
It's worth a discussion.
It's worth a discussion, and maybe we can sway it, I, I mean, I sound like I'm going to say it's going to fly, because I, I mean, I, I agree, I think it's sort of cheesy, and I'll say cheesy for Brad, but it's, well, it's worth it.
I agree with the mayor, but to me, it's just, there's something about having the Christiansburg Recreation, the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, I mean, but I have to, but I, when I thought about it initially, I, what I was thinking about was, I'm kind of, I don't know, I want to be somewhat selfish with that, I want to keep our name on all these things, but it is kind of a unique...
And then, and then, we got to discuss in a work session.
I agree.
I think what you would see down the road is you're going to see an X, Y, Z sponsored toilet down, down at the skateboard park, because that's what the, an article with Reddick Times mentioned several, several months ago about, be careful what you ask for. So, anyway, I, I'd like to get a hold of those things and go, yes, sir?
I just, I just had a comment on that, I think with the, with the town and what they're trying to do, I think, I think if they, you know, changed the name and linked it to a financial aspect, how would it affect the branding of the Christiansburg town itself?
Some of your logos have Christiansburg, yeah.
You know, that's the first thing we would give to me, if we had the Heart Raider Sporting Center.
We didn't sell that one, that was given to us, and we don't, that's like we're going to have a Redmond Old Bridge. Thank you. Anything else? Let's see, I guess we have council reports, and I would like to be first in the council reports, and I would like to congratulate Councilman Sam Bishop, who was this past weekend selected to the Hall of Fame of the Christiansburg Rescue Squad. So, Sam. And our other citizen, Jack Gray, who's, they've both put in a lot of years, and they're both well, well deserved, so I'm going to jump in first. Mr. Harper?
Well, first of all, I want to introduce Mr. Stite, Terry, again, and you might think he looks that way because of his, all his years in bowling, but in fact, he was the first quarterback at Auburn High School, and it's fortunate that both of us are still here alive, and, but he did an excellent job there.
I'll tell you, Steve, you're optimistic.
That's all he is.
That's all we got left.
And the second thing I want to say is, I thought Terry Caldwell did a great job there tonight, taking us around and showing us the place, and I thought I knew a lot about what was going on here, but, and I got some more there, and I'd just like to say thanks for that.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Scholter. Mr. Stites?
Short request tonight, the mayor has not made appointments for committees next year, but whoever's on the finance committee, I hope that we get away from paper, and I think it's time for us to go with the tablets, and I personally don't have a computer at home, I'd be willing, I'd be willing to buy one, but what I'm saying is, we need to go digital so that there's some continuity between council members, whoever's taking the next seat, and so forth, but, and also for FOIA and these other things, I think that it's time for us to go digital, and to have, for each, each, each seat to have a tablet that's, you know, if there is FOIA requests or anything at all, it's, you know, just be used for town business, but it's time for us to go digital.
I'd be afraid to put that in the votes, because you boys should cut it anyway.
I'd like to second that we should take a look at that. Matter of fact, I had, I had a conversation with Adam before this meeting started today, because I'm looking at buying another one, and I want to see how to make sure it was compatible and so forth, and.
I'm tired of doing this.
Yeah.
And trying to go back three meetings.
We're killing trees, a lot of trees.
Well, even, even if it took some of our compensation to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I have a broken printer at home, that's why I started bringing this.
Well, I think it should be town property, if we, if we buy it ourselves, I think it needs to be for the council seat, and that's why it's town property.
And there are some of our use in the town now?
I think every locality, most, most localities of our size are largely already doing that.
Think we could make this an item.
I'm just putting that out there, I haven't talked.
We have a work session, let me make enough money off of selling this building if we can buy us one.
Amen, brother.
Very good.
In light of everything else that's been mentioned, I will skip.
I'll be quick, I mean, number one, it's rather unique, but it's honestly to have a course that shows us how to use them, because I'm the youngest member of council yet, I don't use a lot of technology.
I think, I was going to say, I'll get my twelve-year-old granddaughter to come in and teach that to you.
I get my six-year-old or someone.
I'm still using flip phone guys, so I don't know much about.
Real quick, the last recommission meeting we had was on the first of December, we discussed the RFP, I appreciate councilwork under the work session, Mr. Epple was present, and we went through that process, certainly a vetted process, and I know it's already out and gone, but one thing has been mentioned a lot, the recommission had a very good discussion on it, and not everybody in agreement on that, but there's still some debate to be had, but there's a lot of avenues for partnership that's been brought to the attention of Mr. Epple, he continues to do things and bring it to us, like, hey, I'm going to look at this, 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 and we have his meetings, and he's already, you know, checked on four or five things, so, one of the most recent was partnering with the, the tech students on, at VCOM, about having them be able to have a ability to use some of the facilities there, and what they're going to do for us is put on health fairs and things for our populations at numerous times, quarterly, and then a huge one, maybe once or twice a year, there in the facility, so there's, we're looking at that now, hoping in the future, I'll be able to, near future, I'll be able to report back to council, but we're still about two months out, but where we're, the reason why we're debating that, it sounds like a great idea, but we also want to make sure we are not in any way undermining our taxpayers' ability to use that facility first and foremost, and so we want to make sure, and right now it's crowded, and so we want to make sure that we've looked at everything before we just agree or something, even though that partnership would be a very strong partnership. That would not just, that would be your VCOM students, in addition to medical staff, that would be there to oversee that as well, but a couple of different things that we're looking at in that regard, and the, we've already looked at scheduling, I think it's going to be happening this week for next year for baseball, World Series events and all, and nations is coming back to the area, so a lot of, getting a lot of happenings that are coming more and more year to year now with us, but, so I'll continue to report to that as we get there. Thank you.
Hall of Famer, what's up?
I rest at both seats, and they didn't have anything to report.
Very good, very good. Okay, town managers report.
I'm just sort of volunteering, set our priorities for six-year plan for V-Dot on thirteen of January, we need to take Pepper's Ferry Road off, if it's finished, and move something else to the first priority, and participate in volunteering for the thirteenth of January.
Good motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Certainly no one in favor of that.
Christmas store started their shopping today, and go through the thirteenth, police has, police have increased their parking enforcement, patrol.
Probably more parking.
Yeah. New package was a list of the new officers for the fire department for two thousand and fifteen, fire chiefs supposed to provide to council each year, so we have now, and that's all I have.
Very good. Anything else to come before council? We certainly entertain a motion for.
One thing, I think, is one thing, to be on the future agenda, it won't be on the one in December, but it will be on the one in January, I'm going to put on there, that last year, I appreciate you all allowing April Beach, out of East Peninsula, it's hard to believe it's been that long, it's flying by, we already have a banner, I've got some of them still with me, but I'm going to be moving council to see if we can once again do that, and this way we'll have plenty of months to, to plan for, and so, you know, if that's, I'll put on the future agenda, but just want to make that available to you all.
I'll also ask one last question, is there any pressing business that we could not cancel the meeting on the twenty-third?
We have a couple of agenda items.
If we do, then that's fine.
Well, all it takes is a majority of council, I mean, if you have plans.
I'm just asking a question before we enter this meeting.